Mike, seven o'clock.
They're really excited too. I'm kind of hoping they'll get a good.
Ladies can wear their hats, men can't.
But I'm pretty sure it's actually in the flag code.
The meeting of the Board of Alderman to order, a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on December 20th at 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piatzou and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the rule? Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge.
President.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
President.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Cleese.
President.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Woman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Woman Mili Ziegola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
We have 14 members present. Also present this evening is Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Have a communication?
Communication from Lori Wilshire, President and Board of Alderman relative to the Special Board of Alderman meeting.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Tonight, we have a presentation on the New Market Tax Credit Program for the Performing Arts Center, presentation by Neil Cannon, finance and development consultant. Tim, would you please join us and Mr. Cannon?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. For the record, Tim Cummings, I'm the Director of Economic Development here in the city. And with me, I have our New Market Tax Credit Consultant Neil Cannon, who has been a blessing, to say the least, to be involved in this project because he's brought a wealth of knowledge. And he is a very technical expert in this very complex process. And so what I've asked him to do this evening is to give you a high-level overview, basically a New Markets Tax Credit 101, and then speak more specifically to how we would structure the specific Nashua project. Before we get there, I put together a small little YouTube video that I want to show you. And then lastly, if need be, I can give you a very specific example of how this project, how this tool was used in another community here in New Hampshire, and it mirrors very much what we're trying to do here. So with that being said, the YouTube video that I'm about to pull up is a YouTube video that was done for another area of the country that is a good tool to help give you an orientation, but some of the details are not 100% accurate in terms of what we're talking about specifically, but it is very close to what we're trying to do here, and it's a good 10-minute snapshot. So I thought I would play that to help, at the beginning of this conversation, it will help inform the more broader conversation that will come about when Neil starts his presentation. But again, it is not completely accurate, but is very, very, very close.
Hi, my name is Phil Glynn, and I'm with Travoy. Today's video is going to be about setting expectations with community leaders. If it's your job to raise capital for any kind of community project, maybe it's a hotel, maybe it's a new business, maybe it's a community health center, then the point of this video is to help you set expectations for the elected officials, department heads, or board members who'd have to sign off on using New Markets Tax Credits as a tool to do that. This spring, the CDFI Fund is going to announce $3.5 billion worth of New Markets Tax Credit allocation, and Indian country has to be ready to move fast to make use of that for those types of community projects we spoke about just a moment ago. Now, every project is different, and Travoy has used New Markets Tax Credits to finance everything from higher education to infrastructure to new business development. The projects are all different sizes, ranging from $5 million to $25 million. But one thing that they all have in common is that they all use something that we refer to as the leverage structure. So what you see here on the board are all the different people or groups who have to come together to make a New Markets Tax Credit transaction happen. So let's assume that we're talking about your new $10 million community health center. There are all types of projects that are eligible for New Markets Tax Credits at all different sizes, but let's assume for today that we're doing a $10 million community health center that's going to serve community members, that's going to be located on your reservation in your Alaska Native area or Native Hawaiian homeland's area. All projects are a mix of equity and debt, funds that come from a leveraged lender and funds that come from a New Markets Tax Credit investor. And here are some basic percentages to keep in mind. The leveraged lender will always provide about 75% of the capital needed for a project, $7.5 million in this case. The New Markets Tax Credit Investor provides about 25% of the funding for any given project, $2.5 million in this case. The New Markets Tax Credit Investors are banks, financial services companies, sometimes funds of high net worth individuals. The leveraged lenders can be your local bank, a large national bank, or the leveraged lender could actually be the project sponsor itself. Maybe it's the tribal government that pulls together several sources of financing from grants, loans from banks, loans perhaps from other tribes, or other types of outside investment. But no matter where that comes from, this project is going to be funded primarily 75% with your money and 25% coming from their money. Those two sources together will create a $10 million qualified equity investment, or QEI. The $10 million QEI will go to a community development entity, or a CDE. Travoy is a CDE. There are hundreds of CDEs across the country with hundreds of different missions. Again, the point of this video is to help you be ready to move fast when these allocations are announced, to make sure that Indian country gets its fair share of this vital funding resource. So let's assume that we're using $10 million of a Travoy allocation. We have applied for an allocation of New Markets Tax Credits. We're not sure yet whether we'll get one, but we will hear along with everybody else this spring about what's available. A CDE is a for-profit, private, mission-driven financing organization that picks a specific service area. That's Travoy, and our service area is Indian country. The funding that comes through the CDE, less fees and expenses, then goes on to what we call a qualified, active, low-income community business, or QualicB. That's our community health center entity that we're talking about today. And it gets its funding in two pieces, a $7.5 million Qualified Low-Income Community Investment Senior Loan and a $2.5 million Qualified Low-Income Community Investment Subordinated Loan. Both of these QLICIs, or Quallicys, need to be debt for tax purposes. They can be soft debt. They will flow from the CDE to the project, they'll be used for construction, equipment acquisition, operating expenses, operating capital, whatever the need of your specific project is, that's what we will tailor these QLICIs, or Quallicys, to accomplish. The best time to start planning for NMTC investment is before a project breaks ground, but if gaps are identified after the process begins, that's not too late. As you begin to talk to community leaders about using the NMTC, emphasize to them that it requires you to go through a long and involved process. We're going to work together to carry that load, but everybody needs to be prepared to invest significant time in making your project a success.
This is worse than Candyland.
As you can see, this is a very long checklist. Once your CDE and investor are onboard to fund your project, this is the first thing we would send you, and we can't close your transaction or move any funds into the project's construction account until we have checked off every box on this list. Now, the entire purpose of this leverage structure, as we said before, is to use the financing that you are putting into this project to leverage some outside equity investment from our New Markets Tax Credit Investor. And here's the point, as long as the project follows all of the compliance rules and delivers the community impacts that it promised it would to the New Markets Tax Credit Investor, that investor realizes its entire return on investment in the form of tax benefits. That means that the capital they put into this structure does not need to be repaid to that investor at the end of the seven-year compliance period. It effectively becomes the project's own equity into the new community health center. This spring, the CDFI Fund is going to announce $3.5 billion worth of New Markets Tax Credit allocation nationwide. Now, we know that Indian country's New Markets Tax Credit transactions are the safest, are the strongest, and they deliver the deepest community impacts. They're the best. We need to be in a position to show all CDEs that that's true, and we need to start working now and communicating now and working together to get prepared so that when that $3.5 billion is announced, we can hit the ground running, and whether it's through Travoy's own allocation or somebody else's, to make sure that every single project that's out there that can use this funding is ready to close. To get a formal decision to move forward, you're going to have to go before tribal council, the Board of Directors, or whatever the governing body is that's going to make this decision with all of the information in a way that's completely transparent, but we're not there yet. And when that time comes, like I said before, we'll be right there with you to make sure that all the details are on the table so the community can make that informed decision. To make a formal decision about using New Markets Tax Credits, you'll have to present all the facts and all the information to your community's leaders, and when the time is right, Travoy will be right beside you to help you do that. But for now, to have that first conversation, introduce four high-level points. The first, sharing information with outside parties. The second, leasing property to the QualicB that you'll form and conveying control of that property under that lease. The third is that new legal entities will have to be formed to close this transaction. And the fourth and most important is that the community's financial strength will have to guarantee compliance with New Markets Tax Credit Program rules. What do I mean by sharing information with outside parties? The most important piece of information that needs to be conveyed at the beginning of a closing process are the audited financial statements of the tribe, the nonprofit organization, or other community group that is sponsoring this project. If under your policies and procedures you can provide that information, the CDE and investor will want to see that right off the bat. If that's the type of thing that the tribe has policies in place to protect that information, then you should start talking with your tribal attorney or your community's lawyers now about preparing a non-disclosure agreement or confidentiality agreement that's very common for you to ask the investor and CDE to enter into those before sharing sensitive financial data. What do I mean by leasing land? If your project is on land that is already held in trust, or it's a piece of land the tribe plans to take into trust in the future, then the QualicB needs to be able to do its construction pursuant to a long-term ground lease. That means the tribe needs to grant a long-term ground lease to the QualicB so it can construct or rehab or operate the business or follow whatever the plan is at that site. Now, if you're doing a ground lease, it's important, again, to talk early in the process to your elected officials about granting that lease, because eventually, that lease will have to go through a full legal review and be submitted to the BIA. What do we mean by forming new entities? The most important box on that diagram that we showed you earlier is the one at the bottom in the center, the QualicB. The Qualified Active Low-Income Community Business is your project. It is not the tribe, or the tribal college, or the nonprofit organization that's sponsoring the deal. The QualicB is a single-purpose entity. It's a corporate entity that must be legally and technically separate from the project sponsor, from the tribe. There are three important reasons to do this. The first is that the project must meet the requirement of being owned by a partnership or corporation for federal tax purposes. These are typically limited liability companies, sometimes tribal corporations, but talk to your lawyers now because other formats can work as well. The second thing that goes along with that that's important to remember is it's possible to make that QualicB be 100% controlled by the tribe or the project sponsor. Control of that new company has to be separate from the tribe, but it can remain completely under the control of your community's leaders. And the third is that using a separately incorporated entity to serve as your QualicB narrows the focus of your compliance responsibilities so that the entire tribe, the entire college, the entire community, whoever's sponsoring the project, doesn't have to qualify as being a QualicB. We want to narrow that compliance focus down to that building, that business, that project only. What do I mean by stand behind the project? Travoy works very closely with our QualicB partners to make sure that all projects follow all the regulations they have to, to the letter. But the reason that the tribe or the project sponsor provides its financial statements to the CDE and investor is to prove that they could repay those sources if the project ever broke a compliance rule and caused a recapture of the New Markets Tax Credits. Providing that audited financial statement information that we talked about and sharing information in general is the best way to make a statement, that the decision-makers in the community stand behind this project and that there's a consensus about moving forward. We know this is a lot of information, and there's a lot of ground to cover between here and your closing. Let's make sure that we talk early, often, and in person. Have this conversation with your community leaders now, and whatever questions they have, share them with us. Reach out to us. Give me a call. Tweet at TravoyKC. Look at our website, or send anybody on our New Markets team an email. Let's begin the conversation about making your project a success.
So we're all experts now in New Market Tax Credits. So that was just a very quick, high-level overview. Again, I want to just reemphasize, it's not an apples-to-apples to what we're doing here in Nashua, but it is a good thumbnail to help give you an overview as to what we're going to need to do for the most part. One of the big issues I want to talk about that's a little bit different, that Neil will get into a little bit more detail in a few minutes, is the idea of the ground lease. We're not going to be able to do that ground lease concept for a couple of reasons, and one of them is a municipal corporation should be as far away from the New Market Tax Credit deal as possible. So transferring the asset into the QualicB and then having a reverter later on down the line is how we're looking at structuring it, and that will protect and ensure the city that the asset returns to the city, but nonetheless, it won't be that explicit ground lease-type model that was mentioned in the YouTube video. But with that being said, I'm going to bring up Neil's PowerPoint presentation and turn it over to Neil where he will go into a little bit more detail about the program itself and the specific way we're going to structure the project here in Nashua.
Thanks, Tim. My name is Neil Cannon, and I'm a consultant to the city on New Markets Tax Credits. I've been working with Tim and his people for two or three months now intensely, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, and there's a lot of leadership in this city and a lot of excitement over this project. New Markets Tax Credit Program is a federal economic development initiative that started about 12 years ago, and the purpose of the program is to encourage investments in low-income communities. Low-income communities are defined as census tracts that meet certain income criteria. The most commonly used is a census tract that has median household incomes of 80% or less of the statewide average. And a census tract is just a, it's an enumeration district, it's a geographic area from which census data is collected separate from census data for the whole city in this case. So Nashua has 17 census tracts. They can be bounded by municipal boundaries, it can be bounded by railroad tracks, streets, roads, whatever. And there are 17 census tracts in Nashua, as I said, and of those, I think five qualify. The census tract in which the proposed Performing Arts Center downtown, and which we are in right now, as a matter of fact, is among the poorest in the state. I told you that the criteria was 80% or less, I think I said medium household income, it should be median family income. In this census tract in which we're located and in which the project is located, 31% the average median family income is 31% of the state average. It's way low. It's also got almost a 30% poverty rate. So not only is this eligible, it's classified as severe distress, which makes it a target for this program, an ideal target for this program. Before getting into the details, I'd like to focus on a couple of the concepts that were, or actually five of the concepts that were referred to in the video we just looked at. The first thing is the idea of what is a QualicB, a Qualified Area Low-Income Community Business. Assisted businesses must be a corporation or partnership that exists in a qualified area, and we just talked about a qualified area. This is called a Qualified Area Low-Income Community Business, or QualicB. That's the box at the bottom in the diagram we looked at. This means that the city of Nashua cannot be a direct beneficiary of the program, but it can participate as a lessee of QualicB property, because the city is not, by IRS definition, a corporation or partnership, but it can master lease a property that's developed by a QualicB. And this kind of arrangement has been done before. The first city to really use this aggressively and benefit as a master lessor of a property, a lesssee of a property, was City of St. Louis, which did a lot, used it for waterfront development on the Mississippi River. Boston's used it a lot in conjunction with its redevelopment efforts. In a little old New Hampshire, Keene has used it twice this way. We've probably had maybe 20 projects in New Hampshire over the life of the program. Keene has used it twice to benefit where the city was the master tenant of a project. Initially, I was involved in this one, I think it was about five or six years ago. The Cheshire County Courthouse was threatening to leave downtown, and so we put together a New Markets Tax Credit Program. We set up nonprofits, QualicB, that built a new courthouse, leased it to the city so the city had some control, and they subleased it to the state of New Hampshire. And after the seven-year compliance period, the city, the state of New Hampshire will be able to buy it. A second one they just did last year was a library, about $13 million library. They use this program to leverage general obligation bonds, much as we're suggesting here. The second point I'd like to bring up is the amount of the tax credit is 39% of the investment. We call that the Qualified Equity Investment, which they talked to in the slide. So for example, if you have a million-dollar investment or a project cost, the credit amount is $390,000. We want to raise cash, reduce debt by selling those, that credit.
We don't want the credit.
We want the cash. Right now, the market is about 85 cents per a dollar, so I can sell that $390,000 in credits to investors, private investors, who will pay us 85 cents a dollar, or $331,500 cash. So, you know, in an ordinary real estate deal, you go to the bank and you say to the bank, "I'll put up 20% cash, you loan me 80%." I don't have to put up cash, I'm selling my credits for cash, and thus reducing the amount I have to borrow. That's shown on the next slide. What else is new? There are fees involved in this, and generally, they reduce the value of the equity investment by about 15% as those fees are collected. So that 331 goes to $281,775,000 net, but that's still 28% of your deal. Earlier in the slide, they said it was about 25%, but I guess the, right now, the price is very strong at 85 cents. So that brings it up to about 28%, 28.2%. We don't know what the price is going to be when we sell these, but my best guess is, I think it's, we're modeling at 85 cents. In a Conker project I was involved in, we recently got 89 cents. So until we're ready to close, we're not going to know. The impact of that is if the price per credit goes down, the city bond proceeds that are put into the project would have to go up, or other money that's put into the project would have to go up. If the price goes up, the price of the credits goes up, we get more for our money than the city's exposure goes down. And I wish I could tell you what it's going to be, but, you know, I can't. Number four, there is a seven-year compliance period. So the structure we put into effect to make this deal happen has to stay the same for seven years, because the investors, the private investors, are receiving their tax credits over a seven-year period. It goes 5% a year for the first three years, and then 6% a year for the next four. So the deal has to play, stay in place. The structure of the deal, after seven years, it's Katy bar the door. If the city wants to own the property instead of leasing it, it can. If the city, you know, any kind of deal can happen after that seven years, but because of IRS regulations and because those taxpayers, those investors that are putting the private money in the deal, wanted to stay together for seven years so they can get their full 39%, we can't do anything. It's got to stay the way it is when we initially sell the deal and structure the deal. And finally, number five, you heard the, again in the video, touched, well, actually the narrator, Travoy, is a CDE. CDEs are the key to NMTC funding. They are awarded credits by the U.S. Treasury, and they can, and in turn, suballocate these credits to worthy projects that meet their program guidelines. Therefore, it is our job to convince at least one or two CDEs that the proposed project has financial strength and results in positive community impacts, whether that includes jobs, more private investment, benefits to low and moderate income residents, all those things are included. There's several hundred CDEs in the United States. They all compete for a pot of authority. Right now, there's a pending allocation of $3.5 billion. Probably 50 or 60 CDEs will get an allocation. We're talking to several of them that traditionally get allocations, and we'll be putting out a proposal within the next few days, or shortly after the first year, that we'll send to about a dozen CDEs to ask them for an allocation of tax credits. And what we're asking for is an allocation of $18.5 million. And what we're asking for is an allocation of eighteen point five million dollars. So now, take a deep breath. And let's go to the fun part. Because Dave, Dave Fredt's in the house. So this is always the one that he has. Would you like to explain this, Dave?
Oh.
Let's move this one. So let's start on the upper left-hand corner. I have a little, oh, there it is. This works. Everybody duck. In the upper left-hand corner here. And we're going to work our way down, all the way to the Qualig B. And then we'll go back up to the top. So we're coming down with how the money's invested, go back up the top, how it's paid off. So in the upper left-hand corner, you had a bond purchaser. This U have authorized the sale of up to fifteen point five million dollars of bonds to support this project. We're estimating that the total bond proceeds that are required for this project are going to be on the order of twelve million, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, two hundred, nine hundred and twenty-seven, two hundred and fifty dollars. So that comes down to, that money comes into the city coffers when they sell it. And the city would then make a loan to that, what we call the senior leveraged lender, but is really an intermediary lender. It's an entity that we set up that is basically a pass-through lender. It's an intermediary. It keeps the city one step away from a deal, which is where the city wants to be, where your lawyers are probably going to want you to be, and where the equity investors would like to see you be. They don't want to get into a hassle with the city of Nashua. So that intermediary lender in terms, in turn, which would be a nonprofit in this case, would loan that same amount to an investment fund. Remember, the key to this is you get the credit by making an investment in the community. So we got to set up an investment fund to make that happen. That investment fund, in order to net eighteen, in order to net a loan at the, excuse me, in order to create an eighteen point five QEI, which nets a loan, loans of eighteen million, one thirty, that investment fund needs to collect nineteen thousand, nineteen million and sixty dollars. And the way it does that is it takes the twelve million and change, and then it sells the eighteen point five, it sells the tax credits and receives for those tax credits six point one million dollars. So it's selling seven point two million dollars at eighty-five percent and receiving six point one. And that six point one is added in the investment fund to the twelve point eight, or whatever it was, twelve point nine. And that creates a total capitalization of nineteen million, sixty thousand dollars. Then, the investment fund makes the qualified equity investment of eighteen five. That's a big number because that's what this is based on. And it's what the allocation of credits from the CDE will be. It'll be for eighteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. That moves into a CDE. And we talked about, they are the, another intermediary which not only has the capacity to award the credits, but serves as the lender. So they will take the eighteen point five. They'll take their fees of two percent of that. And we'll have eighteen million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which we're going to loan to the Qualig B. And the Qualig B is going to be a to-be-determined nonprofit, to be created, or another entity that steps into this role. And they will, they will lend, there'll be two loans. There'll be the twelve million, nine hundred thousand dollars and change loan, which equals that, equals the bond proceeds. And there'll be the five point two million dollars, which is the net New Markets Tax Credit cash. In other words, instead of the city having to pay eighteen point one three in bonding, it's paying five point two less than that. The reason it's two loans is that after seven years, Loan B goes away. But it has to stay in there as an obligation of the Qualig B for seven years. It's a zero percent loan. It has to stay in there for seven years because that's the compliance period for the New Markets Tax Credit Program. Then we're now envisioning that the Qualig B owner will be a passive LLC. All it will do is own the building and collect rents and pay debt service. And it will lease it to the city of Nashua. And the city of Nashua would in turn either lease it, sublease it to an operator. And we have an operator. Tim is, and his group and the steering committee have selected an operator. That would either be a lease, or it'd be a contract with the operator. I'm not sure which it's going to be yet. In most cases, it's a sublease for a buck. And now, that's the model. That's the going-down model. So now we have a business transaction instead of, you know, a municipal bonding transaction. And that makes it work. So how do we, how do we service the debt on the bond? Well, the city of Nashua leases, pays an annual debt service, an annual lease payment here, which is equal to the annual debt service on the bond. The borrower, the Qualig B, pays the debt service up to the CDE. The CDE pays it up to the investment fund. The investment fund pays it to the lender. The lender pays it to the city. And the city pays it to the bond purchaser. It's all simple, but it's going to take, it's just the way it's done to qualify under the regulations of IRS. And that transaction I just traced can take place in a day. You know, with wire transfers, et cetera. But it's the way we have to do it to make it legitimate private investment. And it's relatively simple when you think about it. It's just, it's generating a check from the city that ends up with the city after going through a couple of other channels. So there's going to be four or five bank accounts that it's going to pass through on the way up. Right, David?
Right, David.
No, he's not listening. He doesn't want to listen. So I just have one more slide just to clarify what, how that cash is raised. So we have the eighteen point five equity investment. The total credits awarded are thirty-nine percent of the eighteen point five, which is the seventy, seven point two million. The credit price is eighty-five cents. That gets a gross amount of six point one million. You take, down here, we go to the six point one million, and we convert to cash by taking these fees off. And we come up with five point two million. I, which is the same as Loan B, right there, which goes away and is forgiven after seven years. That is private investment. I believe that meets the private investment criteria of your resolution. The investors are usually banks, financial institutions, the big ones, Merrill Lynch, Chase Manhattan, et cetera, et cetera, who are purchasing, investing their money in return for some tax shelters. We will, I don't know who we're going to use, but the one group that's been very, very active in New Hampshire, and in the maybe ninety, oh, ninety-five percent of the deals I've done, is U.S. Bank out of St. Louis. They're very active in this. And there's other, remember, there's other tax credits too that this, these investors are used to getting involved in. There's the historic tax credit that you get for rehabbing historic buildings in your historic district. Works very similarly to this. Let's just take, it's a twenty percent credit taken over four years. And there's the low-income housing tax credit that institutions such as Chase and Merrill Lynch and Bank America and U.S. Bank invest in on a regular basis. So that's it for now. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Oh, I have two other things.
May, before we get there, may I just?
Absolutely.
One thing. I just wanted, just wanted to take what Neil said and give you a real-life example of what was done here in New Hampshire. And this is the deal structure that Keane went through for their library project.
I'm sorry, could you blow that up at all? Can you make it full screen? Thank you. Can't see it at all.
So this is, this is essentially the very high-level overview deal structure that Keane went through for their library expansion project, to be clear. So City of Keane, they had equity of two point five million. That was the current building and land. They had about eight point nine six in a loan, which was a bond, bond proceeds. They took the eight point nine, put it into this leveraged lender model. And that leveraged lender moved the money over to the CDE. The CDE then leveraged it with the equity investment by U.S. Bank of a full total of just over five million. But that wasn't what was actually in the project itself. The project netted four point three million of cash for a total of about thirteen million dollars. The thirteen million was eventually pushed down into the Qualig B. The Qualig B, then separately, the City of Keane transferred the two point five down into the Qualig B for a fifteen million dollar project, which then they were the ultimate operator and master tenant of the, of the library. This is how Keane structured their.
It's a standard structure. And just one more thing, that one of the advantages of this is Keane's counsel has done this twice now for the courthouse end there, and is talking to your counsel. So that's, that's really going to help out, I think, and smooth the, smooth the deal along as we go forward.
So my last comment that I want to make is to make this, full screen. To make this all happen, there's going to need to be approvals by the Board of Alderman along the way. So some, some actions that will be necessary, a development agreement, approval to push, if you will, the twelve point nine down through the system, a transfer of two oh one Main Street into the Qualig B, approval of a master lease. So there are going to be four or five resolutions that are going to come before this body that we're still trying to understand and still try to figure out as we're putting this deal together. But we're going to need those approvals to ultimately make this work. Couple other points I want to make. As you can note, we're only suggesting twelve point nine million in this model. We have authorization for fifteen point five. So approximately two point five million wouldn't necessarily have to be pushed through this model. That could be used still for the project, or not used at all. And maybe you could potentially reduce the bond obligation. Or if there are other items within the project that you'd like to undertake that isn't in the current scope, you could use some of that money for, if you will, upgrades or amenities. Lastly, not shown on this, deal structure flowchart, but is still coming together, is the private investment that would be coming from local charitable contributions, which we're targeting at approximately two point five million. That would be a separate nonprofit that would be involved with transferring, basically, those private dollars into the operator to make that work as well. And so that would be underneath the city of Nashua master tenant, there still could be two or three boxes that are evolving as we're putting this all together. So this took about three to four months of really serious back and forth with Neil and other members of the team here in City Hall to get a comfort level, to understand that the direction we're going. And it is constantly evolving. So when we first started this, it looked very similar to this, but there was slight differences and tweaks along the way. And I just want to make sure you all understand that this will continue to get refined as we move forward. What we wanted to do tonight was to introduce the concept, give you a high-level overview, have you comfortable with the ideas because once this train leaves the station, we really need to make sure we have the approvals necessary to be able to execute on this project. So with that being said, Madam President.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Cannon, for your presentation. I'm going to start on this side, Alderman Gidge.
That's if everything goes correctly. In every deal, obviously, Keane Courthouse is certainly, or library is certainly different than what we're doing down here. You must have something that you can show us where mistakes have been made, where this has not worked, is where the weak spots of this. There has to be. It just doesn't work like this.
Yes, it does. Especially in this sense. The places that doesn't work is where the Qualig B defaults in its loan. In this case, the loan is the full faith and credit of the city of Nashua. So I don't see any, unless the Nashua, the city of Nashua goes into bankruptcy.
Nope.
I don't see a problem.
May I?
Alderman Gidge.
You're okay. Well, there's so many people, and when there's moving parts, obviously. When you rent something to somebody and then you rent it to an individual, let's say, to run the business, well, there's contracts that go in to that, obviously, which has nothing to do with this, has something to do with us. That's a weak spot if that doesn't work out.
We've had more discussion about that than the numbers.
Is it, is it replaced, though? Do you have something to show us where it doesn't work? All this works all the time?
Yeah, because you're going to control, you control the purse strings at the top in the building through a master lease at the bottom. The strength of that lease is up to you, as is the strength of the relationship of the city as the master lesssee and any, any subleases to operators or whatever.
Ken, I just would like to ask, please, is there any, anything like this that doesn't work, hasn't worked? Is there anything we can look at? Has this not worked someplace?
I mean, the only ones I know that have failed are, have failed because of default on loans. There's a couple in Claremont that failed, in a mill building. But it wasn't because of.
Anything?
No, it wasn't. It was a financial failure, not a compliance failure.
Well, so, Alderman Gidge?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
So to Alderman Gidge's point, though, there are ways where there are weaknesses that we are thinking about. An example of that is the operator. And, you know, one of the things that I was really concerned with and we've been internally struggling with is making sure we have an operator in place and make sure that operator is reputable. So originally, we were thinking we were going to create a nonprofit and have that nonprofit execute. And then we moved away from that. And we have a really respected operator who's done this time and time again. That should give us confidence that they can replicate it here. But then in addition to that, what I recommend, and I hope will finally occur, is the minimum contract that we enter into with that operator be seven years. So that way, the equity investor and the CDE all know what they're buying. So, that way, the equity investor and the CDE all know what they're buying for the seven years. So, we do have weaknesses, we're trying to think through where those weaknesses are, we're trying to strengthen them to make sure that, you know, we have the best project as we move forward. And again, this is evolving. Each different element brings about a new surprise, which we're trying to address.
Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I understand the process, and hopefully, my questions aren't quite as innocuous. Question I have, oh, and before I say that, everyone that's involved in each one of those blocks has a vested interest in this being successful. So, for it to fail, they would have, somebody would have to have at least an invested interest in making it successful, and I don't think you'd find that. First question I have is, in the upper-left-hand corner, the 15-5, as I understand it, we would have to sell the bonds for that to start. So, my question is, when is that, and how's the amount of time to set up the rest of it?
Yeah, I got it. So, thank you. So, when you'd have to sell it is going to come about after we get, basically, a letter of commitment. So, it's a two-phase type of approval process. A CDE, if they're interested in us, will give us notice that we're going to, you know, eventually receive the credit or the allocation. And so, once that occurs, there's a window of period in between that, three, four, five, whatever it is, months, and we would need to begin the process of selling the bond and using the bond proceeds. And during that time is when you actually set up all these other structures that go along with supporting this deal.
So, what's the, what do you feel is the timeframe to get from the upper block to have everything in place?
So, the bond funds have to flow into the project at closing, and we expect, we hope to hear, get some kind of commitment from CDEs. The next round of funding for CDEs is in February. We hope to get some kind of positive reaction, whether it be one CDE or two CDEs by the end of March. And given that, we would expect to fall 2019 closing. And once the closing date is set, the bond can be sold.
Okay, so I just want to have a question from Mr. Fredette. You still here?
Professor Fredette, could you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Don't worry, it's not going to be a hard question.
He's up for it.
So, my question is, with what's happening with the Fed right now, and our bond interest rates going up, and could we sell the bonds ahead and keep that money aside, or do we have to sell them when this starts?
I would not recommend selling it ahead, unless it's been discussed this bond might be sold as taxable. Rates would be a little higher for a taxable bond versus non- taxable. I wouldn't sell it ahead.
Okay.
We'll be ready and prepared to sell it when we have to. We could do it fairly quick.
Okay. I trust your opinion.
Director Cummings, did you have something to add to that?
Yes, and also, I just want to point out, it's somewhat of a catch-22 that we're in. We're in a chicken and an egg, because we technically can't sell the bond until we raise $4 million. So, we, in our resolution, unless we were to amend that again, and I really don't want to amend that resolution again, we can't sell it ahead of time. But we, as a team internally here in City Hall, finance, legal, you know, economic development, along with our consultants, have been working on this regularly, and we are trying to line everything up and making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. So, when we need to, we can just cut this loose and go as quickly as possible.
Just one last question.
Alderman Dow?
Is, we're trying to, and I know I've had some discussions with, I can't remember her name, the person that's trying to raise money.
Betty Mac America?
Yes, thank you. It appears like we're trying to get some of this private money just locally, but have we had any thought to going to, say, Boston and people with a lot of money, especially if you're looking at naming rights? Quite frankly, I don't care whose name is on it, if they're going to give a few million bucks for it.
So, to answer that question, the answer is yes, we are very much looking to sell those naming rights, and wherever we can sell those naming rights, whatever entity, we're looking at regional actors, we're looking at actors in Boston, major corporations that might have a presence here but have a headquarters in Boston in particular. We've been in active conversations with them.
All set, Alderman Dow?
Yep, all set.
Alderman Cleese?
Mine is going to be quite easy. These slides, is there any way that we can get them electronically? As much as I love this, I can't see it.
Sue Lovering already has them.
Oh, she does, okay, so we'll get them. Thank you so much.
Going around this way. Alderman Kelly?
I just have a quick, actually, I guess it's for Corporation Council. Is there a difference between selling the bond and using it in terms of, I think the wording says, no money shall be spent?
Borrowed.
Yeah. I don't think any of this is a problem we have to worry about. These transactions don't take place until you have commitments everywhere, and then you go down the checklist, and everything happens in a matter of days, if not hours. And once we know we'll have the tax credits to sell, we may not know the exact figure we're going to get, but we know it's going to be over 4 million, we're pretty sure it's going to be over 6 million. So, we then have the commitment for the private funds, we sell the bonds, we put that money into the pot, and the transaction closes. So, it all, it all happens virtually simultaneously, and we have assurance that the private investment is going to be there.
Thank you, that was a really great explanation.
Alderman Lopez?
So, my question is more about the process of public involvement. So, I know Alderman Malizigoya showed a lot of leadership in making sure that we did get this presentation before the board, so that we're all familiar with what's going on, but we didn't have it before, we had to make, have the discussion about the last amendment. So, I mean, it said in the video, it's very important to be speaking in person often and very transparently, and I think that's something that we have to be mindful of, because with multiple steps and multiple resolutions needing to be passed, it's going to be very important that we, who answer to the people, are able to articulate why we're doing certain things, we're able to answer questions or, you know, address it. So, we need the tools to do that, which means we also need to be very transparent and very cooperative, you know, at this point, moving forward. So, how do you envision that happening? I know we have the Facebook, you know, group, and that's a great start. I know we have Performing Arts Center, but where are people to be looking to see updates, what's happening next? And, I mean, is there going to be like a section of the economic development page, or where should people be looking?
Director Cummings?
Thank you. So, I'm not exactly sure where you're going with that, or what you mean by more information. I mean, this will essentially, this is essentially solidified, so this is substantially complete. There's some additional, you know, understanding necessary as we get underneath the master tenant, that is an evolving conversation. As the steering committee continues to meet, as City Hall internally continues to work through the process, there will be some additional details, and we will be happy to make this available on the Facebook page, and I'll update the project website page for those people who don't have Facebook. But I would like to give this presentation essentially to the steering committee for the Performing Arts Center. Most likely, the Capitol Campaign Committee is going to want to understand this, so we will, we will stock that public education effort. One of the things I wanted to extend to this group in particular is, if you want to have a further conversation about this, deal structure, one-on-one, in a more intimate setting, feel free to reach out to my office. I'll be more than happy to set up whatever one-on-one meeting or small group meetings, if you feel like you need to get more in detail about this, be happy to make myself available for you and for anyone else, frankly, who really wants to kind of understand this. I love this stuff, this is what I do, right? And so, this is how you make projects work, this is how you attract private positive economic investment to a distressed area, this is how you start to bring about redevelopment in a community. And frankly, I hope this is the first of a couple projects that we actually look to do with this, leveraging this private sector money for our community's benefit.
Alderman Lopez?
I personally have no concerns about this now that I understand it. I know I did a lot of my own background research when we started talking about it to make sure that I knew what I was committing to, and I agree, this has a huge amount of potential. I do not believe that this chart is going to explain the steps each ordinance or resolution that comes forward to the board, and I think we need to make sure that the purpose and place of each one is presented in a easily-followed format of, this is a checklist, we're doing step four right now, this is a checklist, we're doing step six, you know? And I think that having the conversations in the other groups, you know, the other boards, will be helpful, because you'll be able to have on record the conversations and the questions that others are asking. And I do recognize the value of having one-on-one meetings and really getting, as individuals, you know, on the board, getting literate in this so that we can advocate. That's also the opposite of transparent, though. So, I'm saying, what I was asking is, do we have a public step-by-step process that can be followed so that peoples know where we are and what we're doing, so there isn't any confusion about whether, are we changing direction, are we restructuring the rules? There was a lot of public concern that we were changing the guidelines or moving goalposts, which I did not believe to be the case, I think our vote reflected was not the case. However, the concerns are going to come up, and we may face repeated questions about that. And I want to make sure that this process is as smooth and focused on facts and progress as it can be, especially given that we need to be successful for seven years if we're going to have our best chance.
So, Alderman Lopez, throughout the process, I've asked Director Cummings to come before this board and update us regularly on where they are in the process. So, he and I have yet to work out the details of how that might look, but I expect it might be maybe the first meeting of every month, or maybe the second meeting of every month, that he can meet with us maybe at 7:00 prior to a full board meeting and update us. Does that help?
It does, I'm kind of imagining a flowchart, but whatever people can follow, and whatever is, you know, material that we can point to when people are saying, are you being transparent, what are you doing now? I think, and having information coming directly from people involved in the planning, rather than through word of mouth and whatever, is going to help us all be on the same page.
Agreed.
So, to that point, if I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
We'll put together a one-pager flowchart, it will be disclaimed that it will, you know, change and evolve, I think, you know? But yeah, but we're happy to, happy to do that, that's easy enough to do. I will say that, you know, from now until talking to a CDE, this will pretty much substantially stay as-is. Once, the next big milestone that will occur is really once we have the CDE onboard and we have a more robust conversation with that CDE. So, but between now and then, I'll be happy to put a one-pager together and outline this flowchart for you, and I'll be here whenever you'd like.
All up, Alderman Lopez?
I just want to acknowledge publicly that I recognize the position you're in, because, I mean, you're putting this together, and so, prior to, you know, a couple weeks ago, this might have not, there might not have been enough certainty of exactly how this will work, who the partners were and all that. So, there is a period where there needs to be planning and organization, but I just want to make sure that as we start to introduce multiple motions, we have the support we need and there isn't more confusion.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Neil, out of curiosity, how many versions of this have you done?
Seventeen.
Seriously?
Probably. I'm just thinking of another, I'm just thinking of another version. We could overlay this with numbered, like a numbers and circles, that would focus on every place that needs to be city council action.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
It's going to look like Candyland at the end.
Yeah, well, we'll find a way to do it.
All set, Alderman Lopez?
Yes, thanks.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. My next question is for Mr. Cannon. I wanted to know about the competitiveness. I know that other places are competing, and have you ever seen someone not take a project?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's become a very competitive program. So, and, first of all, we don't know, of those CDEs that currently have an allocation from February 2018 round, everyone we've talked to says, you know, we're fully committed. But we know that's not true. They all say that. So, you could get, I could get a call, the next, applications for the next round are in June, so you could theoretically, and it's happened to me, get a call in May saying, well, we thought we were fully absorbed, but now we need you, because we need to fully deploy our credits before we submit our next application to the U.S. Treasury, because if we're not fully deployed, we don't look good. So, that's a chance to get existing money that's sitting in there now. But we're really putting our efforts on this next $3.5 billion round, it's going to be announced this February. And we've had preliminary discussions with Mascoma Community Development Entity up in Hanover. They have indicated an interest. This is still pretty big. It might require another one. But there are others, there's about, as I said before, we're going to target about 12. There's one in Maine, one in Massachusetts, and there's some others in the northeast that we may target, and there's some others out west that we may target, that have particular comfort in investing in downtowns. So, it's going to be competitive. I'll just leave it at that, you know? I think it's going to happen, and I hope we get it in this round.
You all set, Alderman Kelly?
Good for now, thank you.
Alderman Jody?
So, I have several questions. The, in the middle there, the investment fund blue box?
Mm-hmm.
I can't read that top number, but it looks like 19 million something.
19 million, $60,000.
Okay, so, does the fact that this, you know, the resolution talks about borrowing 15.5 million, does this violate that in any way, or no?
No, 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 the resolution always contemplated borrowing 15.5 and raising at least $4 million from elsewhere. We're even talking about borrowing less and raising more, but no, the authorization for what we're going to borrow, you know, through bonds, is, this is perfectly compatible.
Thank you. So, to the right of the investment fund, the equity investor, there's another number there in that top box.
Yes, that's 6.132750, which is 39% of the 18-5. And the 18-5, somebody ate my little pointer here. The 18-5 is a qualified equity investment, which you see right there. That's 18-5. So, 39% of that is that number.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that number, the 7.2, that's the amount of credits. And 85 cents per, 85% of this is the 6.1, which is the cash equity injected into the fund.
Okay. And does the city have any liability for that, that, is it 7 million?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. And...
The city's not the borrower. It's a tenant.
And down at the bottom, to the right, City of Nashua.
Yep.
Going back the other way are lease payments.
Yes.
So just for clarification, my understanding is that the operator, Spectacle, is not going to pay us anything.
The way it's, yes, that's correct. Dollar.
So the, where do the lease payments come from that we're going to pay back up?
From the taxpayers of the City of Nashua, who have to pay off that bond.
Okay.
They're just going to circle down and come back up again. That's what makes this a really strong project. You know, remember the video we saw, and he kept talking about, be open and honest and show your audited financial statements? The lender here is the City of Nashua. The ultimate, I mean, the one step away. This deal, okay, I'll show you the City of Nashua's books and their credit rating and everything else. What else do you want? It's as simple as that. Usually, there's a bank that's, oh, we're a little shaky about this.
So the lease payments that the city would be paying back up are equivalent to the payments that the city would be making on the bond without all of this?
Exactly. Exactly. That's why the city has to be the master tenant.
Okay. And one last question, if I could. Where does the possibility of getting tax credits from Community Development Finance Authority work into this?
Director Cummings.
Thank you. I got a promotion. It doesn't, to be very clear. This is a whole separate process. This is a new market tax credit program. What you're referencing right now is a state-level CDFA tax credit program, and it is completely separate initiative and strategy that will be undertaken above and beyond this.
So whatever money we might get from there, and whatever money we might get from private donations are in addition to this $19 million in the investment fund?
You're very close. It would, what I would suggest to you is it's in addition to the 5.2 million. So, yes. And so, surprise, early on, I've been saying, oh, we're going to raise about $4 million in new market tax credit money. What is being modeled, not definite, is it looks like we're getting 5.2. So, yes, I always was very conservative in talking to you about this because I would rather come in under than be wrong. So...
Imagine another box over here.
That's right.
Full of dollars and an arrow that goes there. That's where all, anything else goes into the project.
That's right.
But it doesn't get funneled through the system. And the reason you can't funnel through, you can funnel it through the system, whether it be additional bond money or the CDFA money, which I've done very, a lot of projects where it goes through the system. It goes to the intermediary lender who might have several sources of funding and then into the system. The reason here is, we don't want this number to be greater than 18.5 because if we start to approach $20 million, it's not going to be competitive. That's a big project. Most CDEs get an allocation around 60 million. We'd be asking for one-third of the total allocation if we got to 20 million. So we're sort of fixing it at 18.5.
So if I could, just to finish up, so that 5.2 on top of that would be, if we're lucky, 2.5, and that's where the CDFA tax credit would come in. So 5.2 plus 2.5.
So if I may, so with what we're looking here, at here, the, so this looks like it would raise all the money we would need to build the Performing Arts Center. And the additional tax credit money, the additional private donations could be used possibly to pay the lease payments that would go back up through here and pay off the bond.
I mean, in theory, I don't know, actually. I would have to run the calculations on that. I don't want to, this is, I learned my mistake last time around. You know, an idea was floated, and it sounded reasonable at the time, but I would have to go back and look and do my due diligence and tell you whether that could actually be done or not. So I don't know.
I don't think advertising that we're just trying to raise money to make the bond payments is the way to raise money.
You all set, Alderman J?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Malizi Goya.
Yes. Alderman, or Attorney Bolton, I would agree with you. A couple of things. First of all, Director Cummings, as we were talking about the contract, I was thinking also the operator needs to be seven years, just so we have stability across that seven-year timeline. And I think that's important for the Performing Arts Committee, Steering Committee to hear. So people are all thinking in a seven-year timeframe, moving forward and understanding the importance of that. And to Director Cummings, I did not coach Alderman Lopez, but Director Cummings and I have had conversations about the importance of all of us benefiting from everyone's questions because we all look at this with a little bit of a different background experience. And I just want to say, and Mr. Cannon, I don't know if this has been shared with you or not, but I almost threw a tantrum, like to make sure this meeting happened. And because, you know, your words to my ears, it needs to be open and we need to understand what we're doing. And we were asked to vote on a piece of legislation without this. Although some of us had done research, we hadn't had this discussion. That being said, in looking at the timelines you've presented us with, it seems to me that once we get that letter of commitment, then a whole lot of balls are going to start being juggled. And that's when we should all anticipate a lot of information coming our way for us to process and to make some votes on. Because if I'm understanding this properly, that's when that nonprofit that's going to actually operate the building that we will be paying our lease payments to needs to be established, and everything else that needs to be set up to make this move forward. So that's kind of nice to know because the Performing Arts Center Committee has some other work to do around contracts and design. So while we're waiting for this to happen, we have other work to do. But I'm anticipating three to four months, we will then really have to be hitting the road to get some of these decisions made. And again, recommendations and input from the Performing Arts Steering Committee, but the decisions being made here. I do have one question. And I guess this is, you know, questions have been asked of me, and I guess that this is where my not fully understanding this, and I think wrapping my head around it maybe a little more now. But it sounds to me like when we talk about nonprofit, we're almost talking to nonprofits. When this legislation was put together, we were talking about a nonprofit that was going to have about a $4 million endowment that was going to be used there as a safety or a cushion. And we weren't looking at new market tax credits yet as being part of the private money. So it appears to me that in going down the new market tax credit route, which I'm fine with, and this all makes sense to me, and I do believe it happens like in 24 hours. This is an established process. It's not something we're inventing. But there are now the two endowments. And I guess I just need a little more clarity as to what money is going where, which I think goes to Alderman Jedy's question. Because, and I'm reading the legislation, and I'm appreciating the wording more here, because it is saying that we'll let the bond at such time the mayor has determined that private funds, including the new market tax credits, total at least $4 million. So I'm interpreting that as saying, after we pay the fees, we get that 1.52 or whatever it is, and that goes towards buying down the bond? Or not? Okay, so is that going into this endowment? Because it is private money.
I just want to clarify, when you say endowment, you're talking about the original concept?
Right.
Okay, if I may.
And that's where I, excuse me, that's where I need to click, because we've been talking nonprofit for so long, meaning the endowment, and now we're talking a totally different kind of nonprofit entity that's going to hold the lease on this building that we will be paying for the building through our tax dollars.
Can I see your...
Your magic wand.
If I may.
Director Cummings?
Thank you. So you are absolutely correct. And I'm going to, so this is evolving, right? So I'm going to need direction from the Steering Committee and from you all as to how you'd like this to be structured. But essentially, what you're talking about is, what we'll refer to here is entity A. We've originally always been talking about it being a nonprofit. Technically, it could be an LLC and more to come. But yes, there will be an entity A, and for this conversation, we'll say it's a nonprofit. And then it will be closely aligned with this entity right here, which again, we'll call a nonprofit, but that will be nonprofit B or entity B. And they will be independent but very closely aligned with one another. We will need to have agreements with all of these organizations. Keep in the back of your mind is, talk about a list of resolutions. That's going to be another document that we're going to need approval to enter into is that. So then, a third nonprofit over here, yet to be created, that will have, in theory, $2.5 million, if you will, from the private sector, or $2.5 million of bond proceeds here could go down into that box here, doesn't go through the system, or we just, and so we could capitalize that endowment fund at a certain figure. Originally, we were anticipating $4 million. I don't think that that's necessary. My opinion on this has evolved to somewhere around maybe $2 million is all that's necessary. And so if you wanted to capitalize an endowment of $2 million over here, and then that, now this is what might be interesting to see evolve. And we, I don't necessarily think we should get into this conversation this evening, but it's an idea I want to float to you. The master tenant then would sublease to that nonprofit, and then that nonprofit would then lease to Spectacle Management. And then that, and then that nonprofit would have that, for this conversation, $2 million. And you could have an orderly flow if you wanted to. If you didn't want to do that and you wanted to do it another way, we can absolutely do it that way, and you can have a direct relationship as well. But hopefully, I'm answering your question. You're going to need at least three additional entities. One of those three entities won't actually have anything to do with this system other than, originally, when we conceived this project, we knew we wanted to have some sort of endowment fund or reserve for the project.
Alderman Malizi Goya.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry if I add it to everyone's confusion, but I was counting nonprofits and where the arrows were going. And I'm like, wait, the definition has evolved. So I guess just clarify for me, the 5.2, and I understand that's, you know, private money. So I understand how that's being captured and how that's reflected in the legislation we just passed. So where is that going? And is, and again, is that being used in any way to reduce that? Because at one point, and I don't see it up there, and I'm sorry, my eyes are tired, there's, you had talked about 12-point-something. And it seemed to me like we got there by taking that 5.2 from something. I'm sorry.
That's okay. What we decided, at the current estimate, project costs is the 18.130, okay?
Right.
In order to get that down to the bottom, the other, the fixed number here was 18.5. We're not going to go above 18.5 in terms of a QEI because we want to be competitive. So getting up to top here, we had to push a 18.5, net 18.130, and pay the fees. So we knew what we had to raise here, 19.060. Then we take the fees off, we got the 18.5. We know that what the credits are going to be on the 18.5, and the difference between this and the 18.5 just happens to be the 12.
Okay.
That's where it comes from. So yes.
Thank you.
We are reducing...
The bond.
The bond from 15.5 to 12-point-something. And we'd be, if you, and we're paying for a bigger project.
Okay. And, Mr. Cannon, the reason I wanted that clarified is because very early on, and certainly, I think all of us understand that our knowledge of all of this has grown and will continue to grow and evolve. There was conversation about the new market tax credit money being used to reduce the bond. And so that's the question that I've had sent to me is, okay, if it's part of this, if it's going into that, like, third endowment or that, or third nonprofit that Director Cummings was talking about, then is it impacting the bond?
Not going into the third endowment.
Right.
It's reducing the bond from 15.5 to 12.0.
Okay. And that's what I wanted to be clear, because that's what people originally understood. But when we did this piece of legislation last week, there were concerns that it wasn't going where it is going. So I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was fine.
I think I got it right.
Yes.
So the 18 and 1/2, the QEI that are up there, that figure is based more on what you're looking for, for the new market tax credit, and not necessarily, or not necessarily any quote that you have about construction costs for the product right now, correct?
Yeah. If you did the math, that QEI could be 18, it's like 18, almost 18.7. But we decided we didn't want to go there.
Okay. But I guess my point is, you got to the 18.5 not because a contractor or someone's told you. These are what the construction costs are going to be.
Exactly.
That was just more based on what you thought you could get?
Right.
Okay. Just so people are clear about that. And then the other question I have is just about this seven-year compliance period. Because I think that it's a little confusing in that it's because of the project we're doing, I think people may interpret that as, that the project has to be economically viable for seven years. But clearly, the library and keen is not making money for the town, right, unless they have excessive overdue fees or something like that. So what's the criteria that the city's going to be judged against? And what are our obligations for those seven years for the loan, that loan to be?
Is to pay the loans.
So that's it?
Well, you'll have some reporting requirements, but primarily to pay the loans. Because the seven-year compliance period affects more when New Markets Tax Credits are used to assist an operating business. So if General Motors was a recipient of New Markets Tax Credit Financing, it has to do all kinds of assurances that... that 80% of its labor force will remain in that qualified area for the, for the period, for the seven-year period, and all kinds of other stuff. But when you use it for, for real estate, the borrower's a QualicB, has no employees, just like any other real estate deal. It's usually an LLC or a partnership. It doesn't really have any employees. So there's really no seven-year compliance issue other than it takes seven, for this project, other than it takes seven years to, to pay out the tax credits to the investors. And your leases will be, have to be at least seven years. And any option, if the, if the, if the city wants an option to buy the property after seven years, it would have to be after seven years. And we'll basically buy it for the balance of the debt because it's paying off the balance of the debt.
Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
If I could for a moment, go back to the nonprofits. At the risk of getting very complicated, would you be able to include that in your flow chart and kind of where they fit in when you update that?
Director Cummings?
Yes, but I need direction from, from, from more, it's not on here now because I have yet to hear consensus strong enough to actually tell me how the community would like it structured. And I've heard differing opinions and, and I've had, and part of this, to some degree, we all have to keep in the back of our mind. President McCarthy, who is a big champion of this, isn't here now. And, and so he was involved at the very beginning of the structuring of this. He was actually part of the selection team that brought Neil on board. And so with him passing now, we kind of took a pause. And now we're kind of restarting again and trying to reorientate ourselves. And so trying to make sure we satisfy all the differing stakeholders who are involved in this project is a yeoman's effort. And President McCarthy did a great job at that. I wasn't very sure yet how to actually illustrate it. So, 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 once I get a better thought of how the community wants it structured consensus-wise, I absolutely want to put it onto this flow chart.
Can I follow up, please?
Sure. Alderman Kelly.
What do you see as the steps to getting to that consensus?
Well, one, I want to make sure the Steering Committee has a full conversation about this, a process, and have them make a recommendation as to, as to how they would like to see it unfold. I'd like to make sure that, you know, this body is comfortable with that, and then also the mayor. I mean, those are the three big stakeholders that need to come together to make sure that they're all in agreement with, with how this is, this is structured.
Laura.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call on Attorney Bolton.
I want to say, I'm gonna be a proponent of not making this any more complicated than it has to be. So another two nonprofit entities with separate boards of directors who all have a say on where every nickel gets spent, and contracts with the city, and arguments over who does what is not what I'm looking forward to.
I had Alderman Giede and then Alderman Malisa Goya. Alderman Giede.
Well, it will work if it works. It's, it's really good. I mean, there's so much money made by so many people that we get a little of it, to a sense. Doing much research, you could see that. Question, is there anything, as we, like we say, side of the dotted line, where would be an extra charge? Where could we be, we could be charged more? A bank? Be bought, sold? There is something that...
I can suggest two areas. One of the, the options of avoiding extra nonprofits is to use existing entities, even statewide entities, to be the lender, intermediary lender. And maybe an existing entity to be a, the QualicB. I'm sure if we did that, there would be a fee. If we were to bring in a statewide nonprofit to be the lender and pull the money and just, you know. Now, is it a reasonable fee? Maybe it works. But those are the kind of things where, that's why those boxes aren't there. Because we're talking about it. We're looking for the way to do it. There's always something. But remember, you're dealing with yourself. So it's not at the last minute, the bank is gonna come in and say, you forgot the $70,000 fee for originating the loan. You're originating the loan. So, you know, it's, I don't think there are gonna be a lot of surprises here. I think by the time, I was told by the, the construction manager that they will have a guaranteed maximum price with what? By the end, by the mid-March or end of March?
Yeah, by mid-March.
So I mean, you'll, you'll have a, you'll have a pretty well locked-in budget by then.
All set, Alderman Giede?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Malisa Goya.
Thank you. Attorney Bolton, I'm with you. Keep it simple. I guess my only, and again, the reason my antenna went up about nonprofit being in nonprofit is that I think we need to have a discussion sooner rather than later about that endowment nonprofit. Because I think people need to understand what, the difference. And that one nonprofit is kind of just, they're leasing the building and our loan, our lease payments are going to them and, and how that's flowing through. And basically, after seven years, that like goes away?
It's up to you.
Right, but I mean, it could go away in seven years.
Good.
Yes. And where the endowment is going to stay there. And so I think that that's the box I think there needs to be a discussion about. And, and I know that Chairman Lannan invited members of the Steering Committee to come this evening. I hope they're home watching. Because I think that's an important discussion and that we need to get that box up there just because we're getting ready to go out and have a capital campaign. And that people need to understand that that money's not going into the nonprofit that's Entity A.
Correct.
That it's maybe Entity B. So that, that's my only priority and my concern coming out of this discussion. I'm comfortable with, with the rest of this.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I would just like to say to Mr. Cummings, if you are objective in your position with the city is to look at different ways to try to fund projects and everything else, you hit the game on this one. I, I think this is something that I can see where Alderman McCarthy was very interested in, in coming up, and a new way to take this type of money. But you explained a lot about it tonight. And I think a lot of us, at least I do, I did read your December 11th memo, back cover, as much as I could understand it, but I did read it. So the thing is, what would you like out of us tonight? What's the second half of the, the deal here? Would you like a direction from the board to continue on forward, or?
My, I mean, my understanding is tonight was a presentation. And really just wanted to inform everyone. I want you to feel comfortable with this. I want you to know that I'm available whenever you'd like to discuss this further. I would like to have this presentation at least two or three more times with the various groups I've mentioned previously. And then ultimately, the big thing is, know that there will be resolutions filed either at once or in sequential order, multiple ones, that will need to receive a majority vote of this board to execute on this program. And, and more to come on that, but that's, that's ultimately what we're working toward.
Follow up then. Then, if you so wish, and I'm sure other Aldermen would, I'll speak for several here. When that time comes for resolutions, please come to see us. We're definitely, because this, I, I think the whole thing, the taxpayers have spoken, they would like to see the Arts Center. And this seems like a very viable funding project. Seems to be very modernized. Looking at several communities, such as from up north Berlin to Keene in the west, and everybody has done it. So this isn't a new idea.
Correct.
So I feel very comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Giede.
Just for clarification, Mr. Cannon, you, to, when Alderman Tenzel asked you about what the city had to do during the seven-year period, you said, "Pay the loans," and I heard an S there. You're talking about paying the bond?
No, I'm sorry, I should say, pay the rent.
Okay.
Which pays the loans.
Loans, but you used the S again.
There's two loans. Remember, there was a loan A and a loan B?
A and B.
Loan B is in the amount, the reason there's two is because loan A is the amount of the net bond proceeds. And loan B is the amount of the tax credit equity. And at the end of the seven years, loan B is forgiven. You still have to pay down loan A, which is whatever the balance is on the bond at that time.
So loan B, after seven years, gets forgiven, but during the seven years, we have to make payments on it?
Well, the payments, no, it's interest-only and interest equals zero.
Okay, so...
It's just, it, for, for tax purposes and everything else, it's gotta sit there because you have to be obligated to perform before it can be forgiven. So it sits there for seven years.
Okay, but when you, when you say we have to pay interest only, but the interest is zero, so we're not paying anything?
You're paying, usually there's a servicing fee that is paid on that loan, and it's represented as a percentage of that loan. We're gonna pay all that upfront because we don't want the rent to be different than the bond payment. So that's gonna all be capitalized, it's in the budget.
Okay, so again, just, just for clarification, during the seven-year period...
Effectively zero.
Okay, thank you. And, and Director Cummings, I want to give you a chance to clarify because you said, and I'm sure you didn't, when you said that, that originally we were talking about $4 million, but you think $2 million would suffice, you're not talking about the $4 million that is required to be raised prior to the bond being issued. I would just want to give you a chance to clarify that in case anyone listening hears that and thinks that that's what you meant.
Director Cummings?
Thank you. Know what I was referencing explicitly was the $4 million for quote-unquote an endowment fund. $4 million of private money needs to be raised, period. That's all, that's understood. My, my point is, though, originally, when this was conceived and the resolution as originally passed, made it explicit that $4 million for, for operating costs or an endowment was necessary. At this point in time, a $4 million operating reserve or an endowment would be unnecessary. And I think you could have something much lower than that.
Okay, but again, the $4 million that has to be raised has not changed.
No, to, to be able to move this project forward and actually go to construction, $4 million of private money, cash, needs to come into this deal. How we're getting there, in this scenario, as I outlined, is this equity investor, for this conversation, let's say it's GE, will, will, will commit to six point, well, will commit to 7.2 million, which we will eventually ultimately see 5.2 in cash. That is above the $4 million threshold of private money coming into this deal.
Thank you.
So, so, one last comment that I'd like to make?
Director Cummings?
I just, one last comment, just to make sure it's on the record. This has been vetted by bond counsel. This has been vetted with, with attorneys here within the city. We are working in tandem with everyone. And everyone is comfortable with, with the concepts and, and the deal structure as outlined.
Any further questions? Alderman Malisa Goya.
I guess just to kind of think about next steps, we just wait to hear you've got a commitment. I mean, the work, the work now is, it's all, it's on your side. And we wait to get a commitment, and then things will start moving again. And we will be required to do some things. And if there's any change in this other than talking about the endowment that we've been talking about, that was, is capturing the private donations raised locally, that may be moving, but that's going to be separate from this at this point.
That's right.
Okay, all right. I just wanted clarification, so everyone's really clear about timelines.
Yeah, the additional comment I'll make is, in, in preparation to that, I will be going out and making sure that a PR or a public awareness campaign occurs a couple times, a few times, to make sure everyone is well aware of this as we move forward. So it's to no surprise for everyone.
Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Motion to adjourn.
First, we'd like to thank our consultant for being here.
Yes.
Appreciate, appreciate all the time and the explanation he gave. And then we need to ask for public comment.
Public went home.
Okay, so saying none? Motion before us is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:45.
I didn't want to announce the home vigil, it's fine.